All right, well, it is six o'clock, so I'd like to welcome everyone to the February eighth, two thousand and twenty-one Select Board Meeting. Please note that in accordance with emergency orders announced by Governor Charlie Baker, this Select Board Meeting will not be open to the public for physical attendance. And the Select Board members are meeting online via Zoom Web Conference. This meeting is being recorded, live streamed and cable broadcast by Eastern Community Access Television, which is Comcast ninety-eight and Verizon twenty-three, and on ECAT's website at www.easterncat.org. If you're watching this at home and you have a question or a comment, you can send an email to Michael Blanchard, or pose your question on the Q and A feature of the Zoom portal. Please remember to include your name and street address for our minutes. At this time, I'd like to ask each Select Board Member to state their name to ensure that we have a quorum.
Greg Barger.
Tom Breser.
Carl's King.
And Dottie Full Genetti, and note for the minutes that Select Board Member Lamb is not able to join us tonight. Okay, so the first item up is Department of Public Works Presentations.
Sure, so I believe DPW Director Dave Field and Assistant Town Engineer Greg Swan are here and being moved into the panel as we speak. There they are.
Great.
And Dave, I think is gonna take point and take over the screen.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening, David.
Hi, David.
One second. All right, thank you. Good evening, going to hit, talk about our annual pavement management roads that we've completed and our new three-year plan going forward. Also gonna talk about basically a little pavement management, what it is real briefly, what we've done, our three-year plan, and some other road projects that are going on as well. So pavement management is doing the right thing at the right time, in the right way, and making timely maintenance repairs to avoid more expensive and extensive repairs later on. If anyone has any questions, please let me know, otherwise we'll kind of just plow right through.
No pun intended.
Right. Thank you, Dottie, you got me there. That's Freudian, I guess. So first we'll talk about what we did last year for roads. We were able to complete, I'll make this smaller so you guys can see this, I imagine, on Zoom. We were able to complete some crack sealing, that's our routine maintenance, that's the road shown in blue. Did about forty-three thousand dollars worth of crack sealing. And then the majority of the other money we spent was on preventative maintenance, which is our ultra-thin bonded overlay. We did about three-quarters of a million dollars on Day and Sheridan, Eastman Street, Elm Street, Massapog in Turnpike Street. We also started reclamation on Pond Street, but we didn't finish that. And so the money we spent there will be shown in next year's plan when that road is completed. Then the other thing we should mention, we did do a substantial amount of paving as part of the sewer project, which included Bay Road, Foundry Street, Depot Street, Paquonica and South Street. But we're not taking credit for that as far as pavement management funds, but it was done and it'll show up later in our mile-year analysis. So looking at what we've done since we started pavement management in two thousand and thirteen, we spent just over eight million dollars. Our current road surface rating is a seventy-two, which is down from our initial rating in two thousand and twelve of a seventy-four. And we have a nineteen million dollar backlog. So the backlog's been pretty steady throughout, really hasn't changed, but our road surface rating has dropped. And per our pavement management program, we really need to be spending just over a million dollars a year on our roads, and we haven't quite been able to hit that mark. So looking at our proposed repairs over the next three years, so next year in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, we're gonna be doing some crack sealing, that's the little road you see in blue. And then we have basically two road projects slated. Reclamation of Blackbrook Road, which is about five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, it's pretty substantial. And then we'll finish the reclamation on Pond Street. And the reason why Pond Street hasn't been completed, because we had to do some other work there. We installed a water main this past season, so that's complete now. And then we had to reconstruct a retaining wall, so there was a retaining wall on Pond Street that was substandard. There was no vehicle barrier, so we had a really, to touch that road, we had to make a change there, so we used a modular block wall, DPW did the work ourselves. And that's some of the progress, right now the wall is, the steel's been tied for the rebar, we're just waiting for warm weather to form and pour the upper vehicle barrier portion of that. And then we'll be able to complete the sidewalks on Pond Street and the reclamation and final paving of Pond Street this year.
That's been a long time coming, huh, David?
It has, it's a big project, and again, when we look at pavement management, we look at just the cost of the repairs of the asphalt. We don't really build in other costs needed, so we had to, you know, beg, borrow and steal some funds to get this done, and it's finally come to fruition, but it's a challenging road, to say the least. So looking at our two thousand and twenty-three repairs, this has not changed from last year's plan, this is the same as it was last year. We're gonna be doing reclamation on Cranberry Lane. A reclamation of a portion of King Arthur, we're not doing the whole thing, we're just doing the worst section right now. And then reclamation of Pleasant Heights Drive. And that's it for two thousand and twenty-three, it doesn't seem like a lot, but it adds up pretty quickly, it's five hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of work. And then in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, whoops, get this a little bigger, sorry, we'll be doing preventative maintenance on Foundry Street. Preventative maintenance on a portion of Chestnut Street, we did the other section of Chestnut Street here a couple of years ago, and now we're gonna be doing this portion. And then we move into a good amount of work in Northeastern Village, we're gonna be doing Millen overly on Day Street, reclamation on Barrows, reclamation on Oakland, reclamation on Hayward Street, reclamation on Park, and then reclamation on Bridge Street. And that's gonna be a total of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that year. So that's looking at our overall three-year plan, that's what three years and two-point-one million dollars looks like. Now, it does seem, you know, two-point-one million seems like a good amount of money, but as I mentioned, pavement management's really recommended we spend just over three million a year, so we're under that target. And we anticipate our RSR, our road surface rating, will continue to drop unless we can find some other funds and do some other road improvements. And this brings us to the mile-year analysis. So this is a real simple way to look at, I think I've presented this last couple of years. Basically, our roads, we have one hundred and seventeen miles of roadway. And each year those roads get a year older, so we lose one hundred and seventeen mile years per year. So we have to add life into those to counteract the loss of years of life. And we do that by doing road improvements, so if we reclaim a road, we add twenty mile years for every mile we do, we crack seal it's two mile years, so when you add in what our repairs have been, we find out that this past year, we actually were able to do one hundred and twenty mile years of new life. So we gained three mile years of roadway life, which is the first time we've done this since two thousand and sixteen, which is great. And that's primarily due to the one-point-five million dollars that was spent on the sewer project and the paving related to the sewer project. But that also tells us that we have, again, I we have, we need to be spending about one-point-five million dollars a year to make that work into, you know, add enough life each year, so at one-point-five five million, we're a little short, you know, can I move this into the middle, sorry? The Zoom feed goes over it, it depends on your screen. This is what our pavement management funding looks like, the blue is what we've actually funded in the past. And the red is our anticipated funding, then the green here is our target funding. And you can see there's a really big gap between where we're at and where we need to be. And I guess that's kind of the takeaway of our pavement management presentation. Be happy to answer any questions you have or any comments.
David, we get a lot of calls, you know, about roadway conditions from people in specific neighborhoods, and it's always helpful to me to look at the website and see that you actually have the list on there of what the upcoming projects are and the pavement management program, so that you can see that some of the streets like Pond Street, that's been on there for a while, so it's nice to see, you know, that coming to fruition. But how do you, can you just tell us and the public, how do you pick which streets for reclamation versus crack sealing? And how does that work into the plan?
Thank you, that's a great question, Dottie, and that's the number one question I get is, when's my road getting paved and why it hasn't been paved yet? And almost every time someone calls and says, my road's in terrible condition, and I can pull up pavement management and say, I agree, it is in bad condition. We use a combination of a survey, so we've gone out and surveyed every road in town multiple times. And we come up with a list of defects in that road, which boils down to a road surface rating, so we know what the RSR in every road and every segment of road in Easton is. Then we look at the traffic volume on that road, the cost of the repair needed based on the road surface rating, so if your road surface ratings are fifty or lower, we know it needs to be reclaimed. And we know what the cost of that is, it's gonna be thirty-two dollars a square yard. And then we can look at how many years of life that adds into the road repair. And we come up with a benefit value calculation, so RSR, volume of road, volume of traffic on the road, and what the repair is needed and how long that's gonna last, gives us a benefit value calculation. And basically, pavement management tells us, we should be doing the highest benefit value roads first. And that's why the roads we've selected are generally our arterial, our major collectors that we've worked on so far, because they have the highest amount of traffic and they're generally in better condition, so it's cheaper to maintain a road in good condition than it is to let that road deteriorate and then reconstruct it. So, long and short is, you know, we use a calculation to determine our benefit value. A lot of the roads we have now, especially our subdivision roads, our residential subdivision roads, they're all about the same level, so there's a giant backlog right now, nineteen million dollar total backlog of subdivision roads that really need to be fixed. And if you look back at the, some of the roads I presented, those are very expensive, so it's gonna take a while to get through that nineteen million dollar backlog, so I don't have a lot of good news for people that live on a, you know, in a cul-de-sac or a small residential road. It's gonna take a while for us to get there, because we still have to maintain our other roads, we can't neglect those. I always use the analogy of a roof on a house, you know, if there's a small leak in your roof, you get a roofer out there, you caulk some seams, you, you know, you fix the hole, you just don't let it keep leaking and leaking and leaking until eventually the roof collapses into your house. That's a very expensive way to do a repair, so we always want to keep our good roads in good shape. And then we'll work on the backlog of those failed roads when funding allows.
Thanks so much, any questions from the board?
Not a question, just observation.
Follow up on that, David, it's just.
Go ahead, Chuck.
Okay, I was making sure my mute was off, so David, it's Chuck, I'm sorry, Tom. The thing is that you do have repairs in the budget, right? So if on a larger street or a smaller streets like mine and many, many other streets in town, if something kind of catastrophic happens in an area of that street, like St. Cole or something, you have that in the immediate budget to come out and handle that, right?
That's correct, that's a great point, we do do, we do patch roads, we do that continually a year long. And then we also have done some temporary things like skim coating and like Millen overlay with small trench repairs. So we do do that, we usually spend about fifty thousand dollars a year on those type of repairs to try to keep those roads passable and, you know, in good repair. Although they may need a bigger repair, we'll do some temporary, smaller scale repairs as needed.
Okay, thanks.
Tom?
Thanks, Dottie, the only thing I would ask, and I think everybody knows, this is a great presentation from my perspective, David, I know I've seen this now for multiple years. And I continue to grow increasingly concerned overall that at some point we need to make sure we develop whatever the fix will be. I think that, you know, we're heavy residential in Easton, no surprise to anybody, and a lot of those secondary roads have direct impact at times to how people travel to and from their home and how, when people come to buy homes, what they perceive of that road sometimes has a perception and impact on how people might perceive the homes in that neighborhood. And I just want to understand what potentially the solutions are for us as we go forward, because I don't think anybody's comfortable with continuing to lose ground. And then I believe the more we, ground we lose, the more expensive it becomes. So it's almost like a double whammy of the cost of this delay. Is there a way? Or is there any thoughts as to potential mechanisms that could be employed to increase the level of funding so that we can make more ground rather than lose it? And that might be a general question, not just for you, David, I don't mean to put you on the spot or.
Yeah, no, I can take a shot at it though, but I mean, you know, we need funds, we need the state to to increase the Chapter Ninety funding, they've just announced two hundred million dollars statewide again. I believe this is going on about ten years, where there are two hundred million dollars and inflation in road costs have gone up significantly, so that's basically a cut in funding, when you look at, you know, that's the primary funding source for many of the communities in Massachusetts. And then we need local funding, and I don't think it's possible to, you know, rely solely on Chapter Ninety. Towns that have successful programs all have local funding sources, and again, that's obviously a struggle here, we know we have a lot of needs. And I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna solve that by myself, but I think community effort has to be put forward. And I understand, and I think everyone does, that, you know, roadways impact quality of life. You know, whether it's the ability of kids to ride down the street on bikes and and walk and enjoy the area, and again, resale value and all those things, it is a quality of life issue, so definitely something that needs to be addressed in the near future.
And I did a very poor job of teeing it up, David, and for this I apologize. I do want to state for both getting my opinion out there, I think you and the team and our entire town do so much with not enough, that I truly wish we could give you the resources to go out and make more of an impact, because I believe there's a very tangible, real return for every dollar we're able to give you to go out and to make these types of pavement improvements. I give you credit for having a plan, I give you credit for being able to have these types of measurements, because I think it adds concreteness to those folks, our residents, who may not understand the impact, and it's a clear, objective measurement criteria, and I'll just say that for everybody else's benefit, this is not your pavement management plan, this is this is science, so to speak, so if that makes sense, like people telling us what the condition of our road system, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think it's you who's giving us this rating, it's actually legitimately and professionally done separately, objectively is a good way to say it, I guess.
Yes, that's correct, you know, this is the RSR of the roads, basically a scientific calculation, it's based on observed defects, so it is what it is, and that's the problem, I'd love to be able to, you know, say we can get to a certain level, I'd love to be at an eighty, but I think you probably need to be in about two, two and a half million dollars a year range. And there's other things that go along with that, we can't just pave over roads that need other utility work and things like that, so you have to have a plan, we have to have a reliable funding source so we can work to get all that done, so we don't, aren't shortsighted in our paving, if we just, someone dropped five million dollars in the budget, it could make everything look black, but if we have water main breaks after it and other things that have to happen before, it would be money not well spent, so.
Good point.
And we talked about this during last year's budget cycle, that we used to borrow a half million dollars a year, and we had to make that cut last year to try to balance the budget. And we knew that this was gonna happen, and it's, you know, it's the catalyst to to unfund the roads more for future years, because that five hundred thousand was really, you know, it wasn't as much as we need, but it was something to help try to keep that going, so I think we really do need to be keeping an eye on that, I know that Connor is always trying to look for ways. One of the other things, when you said about the two hundred thousand a year, the Mass Municipal Association advocates for more money than that. Not only that, but they are only guaranteeing that for one year at a time, and the MMA is trying to get them to commit to three years so that at least we can plan for it, because it's not guaranteed every year that you're gonna get anything, and it makes it very hard to plan. By the time the funding is released, then everybody's trying to go out to bid at the same time, and it really makes it a challenge logistically, even with that money.
I'd like to follow up on that a little bit, Dottie, that every year we make an attempt to convince our legislative delegation to work with the governor and other cities and towns to increase that funding, and as David said, two hundred million dollars a year, sounds like a lot of money, but when you figure it's ten years, it's been that same amount for ten years, the cost of construction has not stayed stable and nor go down, so that every year it costs more money. And I think that it's important for people to know that we are actually very actively trying to get the governor and the legislature to increase that funding along with the MMA, so that we can meet the needs, and I want to echo what Tom said, that we, I personally am very appreciative of the work that you, David, and Greg, and this whole staff at DPW do with the little money that we are able to give you. So I'm gonna thank you for that, and I think people should acknowledge that to you on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Connor?
Yeah, if I could just add to this, I appreciate everyone's feedback and echo compliments to Dave and his team. I think it's worth us reiterating, whenever this comes up, that this is a known revenue deficit and one of our many revenue deficits that we've had for many, many years. Dottie, you mentioned that we, for a while, were borrowing a half million a year to supplement our state road funding. But that was meant to be a stopgap measure until more permanent local funding, which typically would come from an operational override, became available, and that's something that the Budget Subcommittee, which Tom is the chair of, was beginning to quantify and discuss publicly a little, just about one year ago, before COVID hit, and of course, the economy took a severe hit, and, you know, policy conversations about overrides are not perhaps suited for the economic times, where that's not a decision for me to make, that's a decision for, you know, Budget Subcommittee and the Select Board to make. But it's, those things are directly linked, right? The last time the town had an override, which would have allowed an increase in recurring revenue, was before the Great Recession, so now two once-in-a-lifetime recessions later, throw into the mix, state aid, and I'm not saying this to criticize the state, but just state facts, I mean, that anyone at home is watching. State aid has been largely level-funded or increased very, very modestly since the cuts born in the last recession, thankfully, they did not cut state funding this year, which is impressive, frankly, given the damage to the economy. But we've been looking at, you know, one percent increases on average to Chapter Seventy to Education, which presents massive challenges on our structural revenue gap on the operations side, and similarly, we've been looking at level funds in Chapter Ninety, which is what is typically the primary source of revenue for roadwork in cities and towns for at least a decade. So our revenue sources outside of local taxes are continuing to either stay stagnant, which is the functional effect of a cut as cost of labor and goods goes up, or are increasing below inflation, which is still the effect of a cut, although a slightly smaller one, which severely limits areas we can go to draw revenue from. So, and the only solutions are not popular or easy ones. So I just think it's worth noting that this is not a reflection on Public Works not doing a great job, they continue to find ways to do more and more and more with less, but just the financials just don't add up when you rely on state revenue sources that are not growing. That's how you end up where we are.
And, you know, I just want to add my thanks, David, when I remember, you know, when you first started talking about pavement management plans and nobody had ever heard of that, they weren't really doing that in other communities, so you've always really been ahead of the pack on those things. Also, you know, leveraging other opportunities, for instance, you know, waiting to do Pond Street, because you knew that there was gonna have to be a water main put in. It doesn't make sense to do this work on a road when you know that you're gonna have to tear it up for something else, so tying that in with other infrastructure, whether it be gas or electrics or other utilities at the same time. And then also tying the quality of the asphalt to the performance of a contract, so that really ensures that we're getting the best quality possible when it's tied to those contract details. So we really appreciate that, and, you know, wish we could do more right now, but it is definitely something that concerns all of us, and we want to try to find ways to close that gap.
Thank you.
So next, you're gonna give us some really good news about the Depot Street tip program?
Yep, I have a couple of updates on some other projects other than pavement management, so Depot Street, the town has completed the design, and we've also completed the land takings that were required to make this project happen. Mass DOT is gonna construct this project, the project has been bid, and the contractor is in the process of being awarded the contract, RJAV will be the contractor on this project. They're a good firm, I'm aware of them, I've never worked personally with them, but I am aware of their reputation, and I think it's a good sign for us. Work will begin this spring/summer, it really depends on how quickly all the contract, you know, documents and everything else get executed. Mass DOT does have a fairly formal onboarding process for the contractor. So we won't know exactly, you know, how quickly this is gonna move, or you know, how they're gonna attack this project until we actually meet with the contractor at our pre-construction conferences. So as we get more information about that this spring, we'll definitely convey that. We'll probably have updates on our website and some periodic updates as construction gets going, and we'll make sure we have some outreach, whether it's through our social media or the Town Crier, or dedicated webpage on the DPW site to keep everyone informed of the process, but this is a multi-year project, about a ten million dollar construction project. And I'm happy it's gonna be starting soon, this has been going on. This is one of the first projects I was had the pleasure to work on here in Easton in two thousand and twelve when I started, and it's great to see it actually coming to fruition.
That's exciting, so it's gonna go all the way from one thirty-eight down to Newell Circle?
That's correct, Newell Circle to one thirty-eight, there'll be a signal at Center Street. They're gonna reconfigure the intersection of Center Street and Porter, and the monument's gonna be moved slightly, so it can be a teed-up intersection, a conventional four-way intersection.
So for everybody who's ever taken their kid driving the first time with their permit, that's had to go through that that torturous intersection, I think they'll be very relieved.
Let's hope so.
Could I just add quickly, so we just talked about the local pavement management plan, about the severe revenue challenges we have there. Depot Street is kind of the opposite, and a success story of, you know, the town doesn't just say, well, we don't have a lot of road funding locally, so I guess we can't do anything. Depot Street, the ten million dollars Dave just mentioned is funded by state and federal dollars, because DPW, oh, the local level funded the design. And Town Meeting, obviously, was generous enough to fund the land takings associated with it, so we put in, what, probably one-point-five million?
A little north of that, probably closer to two, between design and land takings.
And we'll receive ten million back, so a really good investment and shrewd planning on Dave's part, and these funds are awarded competitively. And Dave and Greg sit on the regional planning body that helps funnel those dollars, and they bring a above, you know, above our weight class amount of money into the town, which is appreciated no matter what, particularly given that we have revenue constraints on our other road projects, so I just. which is, uh, appreciated no matter what, particularly given that we have, uh, revenue constraints on our other road projects. So I just wanted to point that out. Dave?
Thank you. And, uh, the next update we have is just, uh, on the Main Street Utility Project. I don't know if Greg in the, uh, room? Does he wanna give the update, Greg?
Greg is here.
Sure, Dave. Thank you. Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, some of you may remember, we've been in front of the board a couple of times over the past year to talk about the Main Street Project. Beta had submitted final plans and specs, uh, to be advertised in the Central Register. They'll be available on Thursday. Uh, we'll start the, uh, bid process. Uh, right now, we're scheduled to have bid openings to get a contractor on board on February twenty-fifth, uh, barring any delays. And hopefully we'll be able to break ground this spring. Um, so I'm hoping in the next two to four weeks, we'll have some, uh, we'll have some more additional information, uh, and be able to get a schedule out to everybody to understand how we're going to attack this particular project in town.
And just to give a little bit of background on that, that was a, um, project that we did get a Mass Works Grant Award for. Um, by the time we were able to really go out and start this, um, COVID happened and there was a lot of concern from the board and from the businesses in the downtown about the disruption because, um, they have had to be closed for so long and then to, um, interrupt their business with more pavement. And so, um, the DPW took another look at this and, um, you know, the, the, um, redesigned it and reconfigured it a little bit and also closed up the, the timeframe on this, um, so that it, it would be as, you know, it's a, they're always gonna cause an impact, but we've really looked at this, um, with an eye to make it as limited interruption as possible. That said, there's gonna be some, some interruption, but I think that this was thoughtfully, thoughtfully put together so that we could try to do our best to work with the businesses, um, to help them around that. Any other comments or questions?
Okay, and, uh, I have a last project update is, um, the Elm Street Signalization Project. So this is another tip project at Element Washington Street. Uh, this is a intersection that's been, uh, in need of a, a traffic signal for some time. We're currently at, uh, just past twenty-five percent design. Uh, this has not been programmed in the tip yet and we're still lobbying with OCPC and Mass DOT to get this, uh, project on the tip. So we can, can be constructed and, uh, resolve this, uh, this hazardous intersection.
So the funding that comes, that goes through OCPC is for seventeen communities. So Easton has really gotten its fair share and then some of that funding. But I think that, um, it's worth noting that you and Greg are very active participants in those meetings, um, with those organizations and really advocating for this, um, and investing a lot of time in the process as well. So we're grateful for that.
Ple- it's our pleasure.
And David, is there any timetable for this Elm Street project?
So, w- w- once it gets, uh, programmed, if we get programmed in, in say, the, the fourth year out, then it'd be about four or five years till there's a light in. But there's a chance that depending on where, where this project is and readiness, that if another project maybe doesn't progress as needed or as it should, we could always sneak in. So we're looking right now in the four or five year range, but, um, I'm hopeful we could get it earlier, uh, if possible.
Thank you.
Craig? Chuck?
I'm good.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate this update. Um, a lot going on.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have an acceptance of a resignation from Maliki Knickless from the Human Rights Committee, effective January first, twenty twenty-one. So I s- I apologize in advance for, um, probably not pronouncing the, the name correctly. Um, but we wanna thank Maliki for, uh, the work that, that she has done on the Human Rights Committee and, um, and accept her resignation with regret. So it will be a roll call vote to accept the resignation.
Barger Knickless?
Brusard Knickless?
King Knickless?
Enfull Janetti Knickless. Um, so they will be posting that as a op- opening for the Human Rights Committee for volunteers. Next, uh, vote to accept a gift to the Health and Community Services by the Knights of Columbus. Connor, you wanna tell us a little bit about that?
Uh, sure. So attached in your packet, uh, from, uh, one of the Deputy Directors of Health and Community Services, Corey Honan, uh, is a memo that, uh, lays out a, a generous donation that the Knights of Columbus have made uh, to the Department of Health and Community Services in the form of Roach Brothers gift cards of the amount of a thousand dollars to be distributed to seniors in Easton by that department. This is, uh, in, in, in lieu of an annual dinner that is held by Roach Brothers, I believe, for members of our senior community that could not due to, uh, occur due to COVID and so they, um, rather than just cancel it, have, have pivoted that to a new, more flexible donation that can be distributed to seniors in need. The credit to them for thinking on their feet there and of course, for their generosity. Deputy Director Honan has sent a thank you letter to the Knights of Columbus and as with any, uh, donation, uh, to the town, the board would need to take a vote to accept that, um, which I recommend you do.
It's a really, really thoughtful idea. You know, it just made me think, we, we are aware of, you know, in our own life, the things that have changed over the past year. But a lot of, uh, the events that bring people together that, um, you know, for a meal or for, uh, a gala or a fundraiser that don't happen, um, you know, to see organizations finding a creative way to still stay connected, um, it's great that they thought to do this. So thank you very much to the Knights of Columbus and Roach Brothers for that generous, um, uh, contribution. So, um, we'd need to make a motion to accept the gift?
Yes.
So moved, Barger?
Second, Brusard?
Barger Brusard and then roll call vote, Craig?
Barger, yes. Thank you very much, Knights of Columbus.
Brusard, yes, with appreciation.
King, yes. Thank, thank you to the Knights. Very generous.
And Enfull Janetti, yes. Thank you very much. So the next one is discussion and vote to reauthorize and amend the intermunicipal agreement that created the Southeastern Regional Services Group, otherwise known as SIR-SIG.
Uh, Dottie, actually, I believe we skipped item five, which was the Fiscal Year twenty twenty-one Executive Office of Elder Grant.
You're right, sorry. Um, back to item five, to vote on the Fiscal Year twenty twenty-one Executive Offices of Elder Affairs Formula Grant and earmark grant signatures request.
Sure. So attached in your packet, there is a memo from the Director of Health and Community Services, Kristen Kennedy. Could not be here tonight. I believe she had a Board of Health meeting. Uh, this is a standard annual, uh, grant, um, award from the State's Executive Office of Elder Affairs. It's a formula grant that is paid to, um, the, uh, Council on Aging, which comes under the, uh, broader umbrella of Health and Community Services. It is in the amount, uh, as it was last year of forty-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-six dollars. I am embarrassed to admit, this has come up every single year and I never stopped to think about it for long enough to realize that, uh, traditionally with a grant award, it's not a contract being expended on behalf of the town. I, as the town's CFO, can just sign that we would receive the funds. And I think just out of habit, this has been coming to the board for so many years that no one stopped to say, well, the Select Board don't actually need to vote to receive these funds. But nonetheless, a request came in and so we put it before you. Uh, so my notes indicate, uh, that if the board's willing to take a vote to authorize Dottie to sign this, but, um, you, you could authorize me or, or, or frankly, neither. I, I can sign it by right. But traditionally, you, for the annual Elder Affairs Vote, uh, Grant, you have voted to have the Chair sign, so.
I don't have a preference one way or the other. Does anyone feel strongly? Because I think if, if we, we might as well change that now to have the Town Administrator sign it, since you can do that by right anyway. But what I do like is bringing it before the board for us to know and for the public to know. So if we could continue to do that, just even, um, if, if it coincides with an opportunity for the, um, for the Health and Human Services to come forward and talk about it with something else. Otherwise, you could just let us know that in the Town Administrator notes in the future. So would somebody like to make a motion to have, um, the Town Administrator sign, um, the acceptance?
I'll move, Barger.
Second, Brusard?
Barger Brusard?
Barger, yes?
Brusard, yes?
King, yes?
Enfull Janetti, yes.
Thank you.
Should also thank, um, Kristen and her staff for putting that together, um, every year.
Excellent. So, um, now we're looking at the discussion and vote to reauthorize and amend the intermunicipal agreement that created the SIR-SIG Group, Southeastern Regional Services Group.
Sure. So I'm actually going to turn the summary of this over to Assistant Town Administrator, uh, Mike Blanchard. He actually manages this contract and sits on the regional board for the town.
Terrific. Thanks for coming tonight, Michael. Well, you're always there. We just can't always see you.
Usually just hiding, yeah. Hi, Mike. Thank you, Connor and Dottie. Uh, so as the board is probably aware, uh, Easton is a member of the Southeastern Regional Services Group, also known as SIR-SIG. Um, SIR-SIG includes twenty-five, uh, cities and towns in Bristol, Norfolk and Plumb County that benefit from shared procurement services and group cost savings by leveraging greater, greater purchasing power. Um, SIR-SIG was formed twenty-five years ago and under the master law in which they were formed, um, the agreement now must be reauthorized. Uh, in your packet is a copy of an agreement reauthorization. Uh, there's also a detailed explanation of the requirement from the SIR-SIG's legal council. There's also a copy of the original agreement from nineteen ninety-six, uh, when Easton first joined as one of the founding members of SIR-SIG. So I'd recommend you, uh, move to, um, approve the Eastern Select Board voting to reauthorize and amend the agreement. Uh, and there's actually a specific motion in the, um, in your packet, um, that could be read if, uh, you're so willing.
Any questions?
And do we also want to at this time authorize the, I'm assuming the reading will authorize Dottie to execute any documents necessary?
That's correct. It, it does include that, yeah.
Craig, do you have the motion? I'm trying to find it, but I-
Yes, I do. I recommend, I recommend-
Save me.
I'm sorry. I recommend you move that the Eastern Select Board vote to reauthorize and amend the intermunicipal agreement that created the Southeastern Regional Services Group so as to extend the term of that agreement for a period of twenty-five years from February first, two thousand twenty-one, subject to any rights of termination or withdrawal, with all other terms of the original agreement remaining in place without change and to authorize Select Board Chair Dottie Foulgenetti to execute any documents necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote.
Second, Brusard?
Barger Brusard. Back to you, Craig?
Barger, yes?
Brusard, yes?
King, yes?
Enfull Janetti, yes. Thank you, Michael. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
And next is the standing update for the COVID nineteen response in Easton.
All right. Thank you, Dottie. Um, so as is, uh, almost annual length tradition at this point, I try to keep the board and the public informed on, um, what, uh, national and, uh, local information is driving decision-making here down on our level as far as our COVID response. Uh, and, uh, starting recently, which is, uh, exciting, is also covering our, uh, current progress with vaccines. Uh, so i- in a little bit after I get through the normal data, I'm gonna invite, uh, the interim Deputy Fire Chief, uh, John Carroll to join me and he's gonna give, uh, a summary and an overview of the vaccine clinic that we ran last Friday. Uh, but first I'll take us through the normal data that we have. Uh, EMA has been very active, uh, since last March. That will continue for foreseeable future. COVID in the United States, uh, US still remains the epicenter of the pandemic. Right over twenty-seven million cumulative cases, uh, over four hundred and sixty thousand Americans have lost their lives. Um, thankfully, some things are trending in the right direction. Uh, daily cases are trending downward, uh, although a hundred and seventeen thousand per day is still very, very high. It's, it's an improvement from where we were. Uh, deaths are usually a lagging indicator. They follow, uh, weeks and weeks after cases. So, um, those are remaining stubbornly high, over three thousand a day on average, uh, folks in our country are, uh, passing away, uh, due to COVID. Uh, but even that again is still trending, um, uh, somewhat favorably, uh, in the right direction, which is down. And the percent positive rate, uh, of COVID in the United States is just under ten percent. So, uh, we take the, uh, our visual data typically from Johns Hopkins University. So as you could see here, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at a rolling average of about, um, hundred and seventeen thousand cases a day, which is down from a pretty enormous peak and spike immediately following the holidays in January, where the US got up to a, a rolling average of about, of about a quarter million cases, uh, every day. Thankfully, uh, with the decline in cases, hospitalizations are beginning to trend down as well, which is a good thing. Uh, we peaked at nearly one hundred and thirty thousand Americans in the hospital, uh, and that is down to, uh, eighty-eight thousand, uh, now. Obviously still, uh, more than anyone wants to, to see, but is moving in the right direction. So this is the graph from last we met, uh, two weeks ago. So two weeks ago, a hundred and sixteen thousand folks were in a hospital. Now it's eighty-eight thousand. Um, so we are moving in the right direction. So the COVID, uh, risk level in each state, according to, uh, COVID Act Now, which is a data aggregator of publicly available health metrics, which are based on daily new cases, the infection rate and the test positivity rate. Risk level in the United States is, uh, still high, but it is improving. Uh, this map, I think, when they first rolled it out about six weeks ago, was basically all purple and red. So at least now we're starting to move closer oranges and yellow. Uh, this is what it looked like two weeks ago. So we are, uh, again trending in a, in a better direction there nationally. So moving into, uh, state level statistics, Commonwealth has seen a, a cumulative of more than a half million cases. And we're approaching fifteen thousand residents of the Commonwealth who've lost their life to COVID. Thankfully, uh, like you just saw, I'm a national, uh, trend, uh, we are in the state trending downward. Um, you could see, uh, W, uh, GBH, uh, or I believe it's just GBH now, um, uh, was good enough to note, uh, first day of autumn, Thanksgiving and Christmas on the, this trend. So you could really see the pretty huge impact that those holidays had on the amount of COVID spreading in Massachusetts. And now thankfully, it is, um, heading down, uh, in a better direction. And hopefully folks were safe yesterday from the Super Bowl and didn't have parties. Um, then hopefully we won't have occasion to see spikes like that again. This is, uh, the same data from Johns Hopkins University. Uh, we are trending downward, as I just noted. Starting in October, cases really kind of went through the roof in Massachusetts. Uh, things are moving in the right direction. Um, although it's worth noting, their daily cases are still more than twice as common as they were in early November. Uh, and much like we saw in the United States figures, thankfully, hospitalizations in Massachusetts are on the decline. We peaked at around twenty-two hundred, uh, residents in the hospital with COVID. That's down to just under fourteen hundred. And for perspective, two weeks ago, that number was nineteen forty-six in the hospital. So, uh, it's quite, quite a noticeable improvement, uh, in hospitalization rates, which is a good thing. Moving into, uh, COVID stats for Easton. So Easton, uh, is out of a red, uh, so to speak. Um, we are still surrounded by an ocean of it, but we are moving, uh, in a, uh, better direction there. Although as we had, have noted, one of the key factors there is test positive rate. And now that Stone Hill has, um, uh, started up their, uh, surveillance testing, that does provide a significant amount of repeat negatives into that pool, um, to push Easton, uh, into lower risk categories. So we are, uh, that said, it's still a, a better trend. This was two weeks ago. Um, so you are seeing that in addition to Easton, um, the risk level in communities in Massachusetts is beginning to decline, although it's obviously still meaningful. So COVID cases cumulative in Easton, uh, as of, uh, weekly report from the DPH last week, Easton has seen fifteen hundred and forty cases of COVID. Uh, that's up significantly, uh, from the last meeting when you were at twelve seventy-nine. So, you know, uh, although our test positive rate is going down, um, the spread of COVID is still a, a real factor here in Easton and folks need to continue, uh, to do the right thing and limit gatherings and, and keep their distance and keep their masks. This is our bi-weekly case growth, which is again, moving in the right direction, but it's still elevated and it's higher than we wanna see. Bi-weekly case growth in Easton peaked in mid-January, um, much like many other places around the country and the immediate aftermath of, um, holiday gatherings. The average, uh, for perspective, it is almost isn't even a relevant comparison anymore because things have changed so much. But the average bi-weekly case growth back in October, we, was about fifteen and a quarter. So we'd get fifteen or so new cases every two weeks. Now it's about two hundred and fifty every two weeks is, is the- Now it's about 250 every two weeks is the average. So just, again, starting to come down off that peak. Hopefully, that continues to improve. But the fact that the improved figure is still so much higher than where we were shows how much things have changed. This is the test positive rate in the town of Easton. State average right now is 4.32%, which is an improvement. And Easton's is actually below that now. Again, Easton and many other cities and towns in Massachusetts are seeing the benefits of robust testing regimens at colleges located in their communities that are part of a reason of test rates going down. So Easton, right after the New Year, peaked at over 10% test positive rate. That was right around when we did our own drive-in clinic, a drive-in, drive-through clinic. And since then, we have been steadily declining as a combination of slightly fewer cases and Stone Hill's test operations come online. So this is the actual raw data we pulled to inform all these visuals. And, you know, as you can see, January was just an extraordinary month as far as the amount of cases of COVID in Easton. The last weekly report of December, we had 899 cumulative cases. And by the end of January, that was 1,414. So more than 500 cases in Easton in the month of January alone. Which, again, I'm just pointing out the facts of not, or at least I'm not attempting to overtly editorialize it. This is similar to what other communities have seen, what health experts warned about as the holidays came around. And so obviously, we were in the red pretty much post-Friday until this past week, and hopefully we'll continue trending in the right direction. So said it every one of these meetings, every two weeks for a year. I'm going to keep saying it until I don't have to, which is a day I'm sure we all look forward to, which is that everyone needs to, you know, keep their chin up and keep doing the right thing, especially now that vaccines are rolling out. That's obviously a difficult process, and, you know, everyone wants it right now. We all do. There's not enough to go around immediately, but that'll continue to improve. And so with that, I'm going to ask Mike if you could move Deputy Carroll into the panel. We're going to talk a bit about where we are with vaccines. So before Deputy Carroll takes over giving a presentation on how our clinic last week went, I'm just going to just cover again quickly the Commonwealth's COVID vaccine plan, which is what informs what we are allowed to do here in Easton. The phasing, as far as who is in each phase and which group within that phase is eligible to get a vaccine at any given time, is determined by the Commonwealth, not the town. The channels through which those vaccines can be distributed is, again, not a decision we have complete control over. That's a state-level decision. And it includes a variety of cross-sector channels. You have pharmacies, hospital groups, state-run mass vaccine sites. And when the state provides the vaccines to us, municipal sites. The role of municipalities continues to evolve and is not set in stone. I said about two weeks ago, and I assume I'll probably be saying that frequently as we move forward. So for anyone watching, if you have not read up on the state's vaccine rollout plan, visit nas.gov/covidvaccine to get some information there. So currently, the Commonwealth is in what they're calling the first group of Phase II. So we put a red box around that. That is individual 75 and above. All right, do we have? Oh, sorry, that's our Semrec radio equipment. We are in the first group of Phase II right now, which is for residents 75 and older. They're eligible to attempt to book a vaccine appointment through the state's website. As of last Friday, they can call 211 for some assistance if they can't use a website, which is good, that that's available. And to the extent we can, when we get doses, Easton is committed to offering our own clinics. And with that, I'm going to ask that Deputy Carroll take over. I think this is the first time we've had Deputy Carroll at a meeting. Dottie pointed out, you know, Dottie has visited a couple of our vaccine clinics and has seen the good work that that John is doing. John was appointed as the interim deputy of the Eastern Fire Department, I believe, early October, which feels like five lifetimes ago in the COVID time continuum. Stepped up in the interim capacity to help out the department and the town at a really hectic time, obviously, with COVID. And he's been taking point on Day of Operations at our vaccine clinics and has been doing a really incredible job along with the whole emergency management team. So happy to have Deputy Carroll in tonight to just kind of do an overview of the important work we've all been doing together, that he's been doing a really good job running Day of. So, Deputy, you want to pick it up from here and just tell me when you need me to move you through your slides?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Connor. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Evening.
Yeah, so I guess if you don't mind, take it back a little bit to leading up to this mid-December, when we started hearing word of the emergency use authorization for Pfizer, Moderna coming out. We joined a consortium with our few of the local fire departments to secure vaccines for our first responders. So we got that right out the gate and shortly after kind of realized that there was some, not downfalls to it, but some limitations, I guess would be the right word. And we weren't going to be able to kind of expand on it and bring vaccine to the public. So we branched out with Connor, Kristen Kennedy, and our field medical director, Dr. Crowley. And long story short, we submitted the vaccine to become an independent clinic for the town of Easton. Few weeks went by before we got the authorization for that, and we're now able to request our own vaccine through the state for the town of Easton. So it was a big step forward for us. We were all very kind of proud. It was a good moment for us. And kind of post-pandemic, it allows us the opportunity to branch out a little bit and host some flu clinics, which the fire department has never done. And we'll be able to grow a little bit from this as well. So some, some good coming out of the pandemic, so to speak. But to get into the slides a little bit, so February 5th, last Friday, was our first public vaccine clinic. We, the work really started Monday, the first. I don't know if anyone's familiar with the term PrepMod yet, but it's a state platform that we're using to register and record our vaccinations. And we had to train nine of the Health and Community Service workers to register this particular demographic for the vaccine because the state was essentially saying to an 85-year-old, follow this link and go to Gillette Stadium. So we, we kind of wanted to make it a little easier of a process. So we put the word out. And within a matter of four days, they fielded 350 calls successfully. So that's captured calls, recorded the demographic of that person, and registered them into the PrepMod program. So over a four-day period, they had 350 people in that system, ready to go for our Friday clinic. So hats off to them. They were an outstanding job. I don't envy what they were doing. There was some really strong work. So again, day of the clinic, it was nine-to-five day. We're averaging a person every two minutes. And a total of 250 were vaccinated that day. Of those 250, we did have a waiting list of 100 people, but we only had to utilize one. We had one no-show that day. And that person was there in a matter of 10 minutes at the end of the day. So we have a good window of six hours when we puncture the vaccine. We used Moderna vaccine as of now at the clinic. And we have a six-hour window to get someone there. So it was a non-issue, but just, just one person that had to come in off that waiting list. And again, there was 250 administered. So personnel of the day, nine Eastern Fire personnel, including Dr. Crowley, nine, excuse me, nine other town Eastern personnel from Health and Community Services. And we had a total of eight CERT volunteers as well, and they were both registering at the end of the clinic. We can go through the slides. It shows in the stations. Do you want to click forward, Connor, please? Yeah, so you can see the entrance on the left there, and that was a registration stations. So they were pre-registered. So alls we did here was scan insurance cards and then move them along to station number two. So if you follow the lines to the back of the building, that was where the actual vaccine was getting administered. We had three stations set up and one EMS station, just in case anyone had any medical complications and needed to sit down. And then you follow the lines back down into the post-vaccine recovery room. In that room, we had four registration stations. With this system PrepMod, we do not have the ability to bring information forward from the first contact with the patient. So we have to input demographics and insurance information twice. So we set up the, put the stations in place and got them rolling. So that way, when that person, the patient, left the clinic, they had their card, they knew they were coming back, and we didn't have to do any more calling. So the second clinic, March 2nd, when they come back, will have less of, less movement in that room. But it was a kind of a critical function just to get them all set for their, their next shot. Is there any other pictures?
Sure. So we have some photos I'll walk you through, but I, I think Deputy Carroll's being very modest of the amount of additional labor created by effectively the state's mod is software we must use from the Commonwealth. Like any government software has some kinks to it. And, you know, basic quality-of-life features you would think would exist don't, such as, you know, we know that these are two-shot vaccine regimens. If somebody comes in on a Friday and gets a Moderna shot, we all know they need to come back 28 days, give or take, to get a second shot. And there's no function in PrepMod for us to copy and paste patient information or auto-import it. So it has to be manually recreated again. And so we had a kind of a small army of checkout and booster shot registration folks between CERT team members and administrative personnel who would try to make good use of the 15-minute observation period during which fire department paramedics kept an eye on the folks to make sure they didn't have any reactions. And so it was a good, good thinking by the deputy and the department of Fire Department and Health and Community Services to make good use of that patient observation time and get them booked for, for next time. So I'll start walking you through photos.
This is just one of the CERT functions outside. The picture on the left was just ensuring that we, we only have so much social distancing capacity in any building, but that this one is, has particular challenges. And they were just checking the appointment time, just ensuring they weren't walking in any more than five minutes before their appointment. So we didn't have a bottleneck at the initial registration. The picture on the right, you see Chief Partridge, Tim Myers behind him, and those are our two registration stations. So the initial, when you walk in the door, you're asked to take off your personal mask. We hand you a KN95 mask, do a temperature check, and you hand sanitize. But just an initial step, make sure to have a mask on that has some form of protection value, not just some, you know, someone's cloth or normal face covering. So something as from us so we can keep it all consistent. And then they move forward to the registration. Station, station number three was a CDC check. So they review the questions that, the check sheet that the CDC issued, just to make sure there was no contraindications to receiving the vaccine. And this day, we actually had a nurse from the CERT team. So it worked out extremely well. We have a nurse at that station. And then behind the number three are our three vaccine, three vaccine stations. And then to the left was the observation room, just in case someone had an adverse reaction. We could take them somewhere private. On the left is Lieutenant McCormick prepping the vaccine. So at first, we actually only used two of our vaccine stations. We were able to keep up with the volume well. And that freed up one paramedic to just be tasked with drawing the vaccine. It helps immensely with just accountability on vaccines. You get 10 per vial. And if you have different people coming in and drawing out of order, you can lose count. And it's very important for you follow the manufacturer's recommendations and only get 10 per vial. So in the middle is our medical director, Dr. Crowley. He, he always has his boots on the ground. He's, he's a great resource. He comes out to almost everything we host. And right now, if we had a serious call, we could call him and he'd be on scene in a matter of minutes. So he's just a great resource. And on the right, that was our station number four. And it was a reserve station in case we needed additional registration capacity on the backend. And we actually didn't, those stations functioned very well. And they just leaned in, would follow into the station. These are our registrations. See Cory on the right. And this was them getting their registration for the second dose. And on average, we had about a two-minute wait time after they were registered. And the station on the top, we put in towards the end, just as an additional station, just, we had a, the last hour of the clinic, we actually stacked differently to test our volume. So we were seeing if we could increase our hourly rate. So we put that station in kind of to absorb that if we became overwhelmed.
Oh, that, that kind of covers the events, the day. Does anyone have any questions for Deputy Carroll?
Hi, John. It's Craig Barger. I just want to tell you that the feedback I got from people who were participating, the seniors, was very positive. So thank you for that. We really appreciate it.
That's great to hear. Thank you, Greg.
Yeah, I just want to point out as well, I think, Connor, you did a great job calling out the, the being nice about the amount of effort. I will also take it a step further and say, I think you were also being nice. I can speak firsthand for the complexity of running clinics. And from what I see on my business side, and, and I give credit to all of the people that make it happen. I don't mean to infer that I actually run the clinics. I've just heard about the effort and the coordination and the challenges that can be put forth by running clinics. And to have you folks run one as flawlessly, smoothly, and as professionally as you did, is just an incredible statement. I wish that I could give everybody the experience that I'm trying to emphasize with my words. But please just know that it is not a simple thing to do, and to have it run smoothly is priceless. And it just, from the pictures, looks to be so professionally run that I give you, you all credit. So just very well done.
Thank you.
Chuck?
I agree with that. I'm very, very thankful for the job you and your folks have have been doing, Deputy Carroll.
Thank you.
And I'll say that I did go to the COVID testing a couple of weeks ago that was kind of a trial for how this would lay out for the vaccination testing. And Deputy Carroll, you were cool as a cucumber, and everybody was doing their job. And all that real hard work and preparation really showed. The day of the vaccines, the people coming in were very happy, very grateful. And it made me just feel very happy that our, our community could offer that to our older people. You know, the people that I talked to, they're scared. They don't know when, you know, keep in mind, the information on this changes so much week to week. A week ago, people still didn't even know who was in line, you know, to get what at what time. And, and they were trying to call the numbers, and they couldn't get through. And so much has changed in a week. I think that our Health and Human Services Department, reaching out by phone and talking to, to our older neighbors and reassuring them, they just, I think that people, including my own mother, who's 80 years old and lives down the Cape, you know, people worried. They didn't know how they were supposed to get the information. Did they miss the call? Were they supposed to call? So I think just having our very professional team, including the CERT team, for all the work that you did to reassure and comfort our people that were trying to get the shots was just incredible. So thank you very much.
You know, Dottie, I apologize. I just wanted to add one thing that I'm seeing on our side of the fence, and you mentioned it. This is an incredibly emotional aspect for a lot of people, and there's a lot of moving parts. And breakdowns in communication I've seen on our, our side of the fence in my professional world have really led to a dramatic amount of anxiety or concern. And just want to speak to the fact of the level of importance that the town and, and this team placed on communications and how that went off smoothly. I just, I want to impress upon people, for a lot of the folks receiving this vaccine, it is, it is so personal and so sensitive. And, you know, Deputy, I give you and your team, and Connor, you and the team, credit for really great communication, too. I can't emphasize Credit for really great communication too. I, I can't emphasize that enough. Sometimes it's, it's overlooked, um, but it is so important to the overall process too.
Thank you. Um, you know, I'd, I'd like to just add, um. Uh, myself and Assistant Time Minister, Brian Chad were there and, uh, wanted to be helpful and got, uh, I think it's called just in time training, uh. Uh, on running, uh, some checkout, uh, portals ourselves so that we could be useful and not just like a nervous, uh, dad. While sitting around a waiting room, um, while something important was happening and, uh. I was able to, to hop on one of those stations for a couple of hours and the feedback I got, um, about the, the treatment that the, uh, seniors were getting from. Uh, the town staff, fire department, health, uh, department and our cert team was overwhelmingly positive. And to your point, Tom, just to really. Really, um, you know, it's been a really hard year for a lot of people in a lot of different ways and, you know, people during their checkout, um. Uh, you know, telling stories of that, you know, a lot of them haven't, um, ever held their grandchild who was born last year, um. Uh, you know, really, uh, difficult and, and sad sacrifices that people made. And obviously with this. Group folks who are significantly more vulnerable to severe illness or death, um, how emotional and powerful. Uh, it was and, and really, um, you know, uh, some of the best, um. You can ever see in public service is seeing a team come together in this way and under significant pressure, um. Too, and you know, Dottie, you know, Deputy Carol, uh, cool as a cucumber. That was what I saw. Last week and that extended to, uh, the members of the department and the health team, you know. We, Deputy Carol mentioned this, that we had some paperwork to put it lightly to, to square away to get, uh. Uh, ourselves basically certified as an independent vaccine site through the holidays and, um, the department went from. Uh, if you look at the chart we have here and I'll start updating this every week and I hope that lots of bars get added, uh, but that depends on how much vaccine the state will give us. Weekend in January twenty-third, there was three days of clinics for eighty first responders, so thirty, thirty and twenty. Uh, so on average, the, the, the fire department, uh, these clinics were administering thirty shots in a five-hour window and then the next. Phase, they did two hundred and fifty in eight hours. Um, so that's scaling up. From about six vaccines an hour, uh, to over thirty an hour, um, using the same building layout and, uh. You'd think they had done it before. Um, so it's just really testament to the amount of pressure that, uh, our, our team was under and. Uh, how much, um, you know, Deputy Carol, Chief Partridge, Director Kennedy and, and all the staff and volunteers rose to that. So very proud of them. And I hope.
Also Connor, oh, I'm sorry. Um, just another comparison on that date of, uh, February sixth, when. This team did two hundred and fifty, Gillette did a thousand. So, so is that correct? We did twenty-five percent of what Gillette did that day?
I, I heard that that was true, but I do not have Gillette's number, so I, I, I don't. Want to misspeak. I don't know if Deputy Carol does, but that's, Gillette will eventually scale up to, I think, five thousand a day. But there, I don't think they're there yet, but we were doing. Uh, you, a, a very aggressive amount of, of our kind of staff per capita level, uh, for sure. Um, compared to a, a huge operation like Gillette. So, um, Deputy Carol, you're free to stick around while I just touch on the next few pieces. It's vaccine related, but thank you so much for joining us, um, and thank you for the good work. Uh, so. I'm going to start updating this chart every time I give the presentation, which is how many, uh, vaccines the town has administered ourselves directly, uh. Using weekends, uh, Saturdays as the kind of measurement, uh, there. These are non-cumulative. So you'll see the week ending, uh, January twenty-third. We administered eighty doses, weekend ending this Saturday the sixth, we administered two fifty. Um, so cumulatively, Easton has administered three hundred and thirty first doses of a Moderna vaccine. Uh, for now, we are, uh, under the impression from what DPH has told us that we are limited to asking for one hundred, uh, first doses per week. Uh, and that receiving, uh, any is not guaranteed. We have received our second doses for our first responders and the state is operating on a kind of platform of we will grant. Whatever they grant us for our first dose, so they will follow through and get us those second doses and those do not count against our requests for first doses. Um, so, uh, EMA is going to continue to make clinics available to the public, uh, the populations that are eligible based on. Um, the state's phasing guidelines and whatever doses they, they put in our hands, um. So moving forward in Easton, so again, we're, we're committed and our team has shown the capability, um. Uh, had some really good press coverage on this. Uh, you know, we have a team of people who are already and able to get these vaccines, uh, into, uh, arms in Easton. Um, but it, we can only get out as many, uh, as we're allowed to give, uh, and receive from the state. We obviously. Would have our own kind of operational limitations, um, but we're not there yet. We, we just, the vaccine is the limit right now. The timetable we're working with is very constrained. We have ten days from receipt of a vaccine, um, to. Notify eligible residents, as Deputy Carol mentioned, that, that the form that took was four days of direct. Phone calls, hundreds of phone calls. It's, this is labor intensive. This is not. A patient group that you can necessarily just do a reverse email blast and tell everyone to sign themselves up. Although hopefully as we get towards phase three, that becomes more true. So we have ten days from a receipt of vaccines to notify all, uh, residents, schedule them typically over the phone. Staff the clinic and, uh, run the clinic and get those doses in the arms. Then there's, uh, a, a, a pretty, um, significant amount of reconciliation with the state's. Immunization database system to make sure that the patient information the state is getting is accurate on the backend. Uh, because of those constraints, notice that we're able to provide to eligible residents is going to be pretty, pretty brief. Pretty, pretty limited unless the DPH's protocol for vaccines changes. But for now, if you're on our vaccine interest list, um. And you're in the eligible group. So right now, the eligible group is seventy-five and up. If you're on that vaccine interest list, just make sure whatever contact information you gave us, you check it regularly. Um, or if you get a phone call from the town of Easton, please pick the phone up. So moving forward, vaccines to be scheduled. We will have two clinics this week, uh, Friday, February twelfth. We're going to have a combined phase one and two clinic that will, uh, administer, uh. Saw a, a handful of the second Moderna shot doses for our first responders that we started back in January. As well as, uh, first doses for another group of eligible Easton seniors. Uh, seventy-five and above who are currently on our vaccine interest list. Again, um. I believe starting perhaps as soon as tonight, um, but certainly by tomorrow, health department staff will begin, uh. Working the phones and calling eligible seniors, uh, on that list. If you don't get a call, you should not automatically assume that they skipped you. I just went and checked and, uh, there are. Currently more than three hundred, uh, eligible seventy-five and above on this list. Um, and that's after we issued, did two hundred and fifty vaccines on Friday. Between the seventy-five, sixty-five and comorbidities group, we have more than eleven hundred residents on our pre-registration list. So, um, if we're capped at asking for a hundred doses a week from the state. Uh, it's going to take us a, a long time to make our way through that list. Uh, we'll keep asking for more. We'll do as much as we can, um. But I do ask that if you're on that list, keep, uh, you know, check your phone and your email, but don't, don't, don't panic if you don't get a call. Um, and we encourage people to continue to check other vaccine sites, use the state website. And if you do get, uh, uh, an appointment. At Gillette or somewhere else like that, um, shoot an email to our team and let us know and we'll pull you off the list, um. So we'll have the clinic on Friday, which is a combined first dose for some more seniors, second shot for some of our first responders. And Saturday we'll have a, a smaller clinic, which is limited just to second shots for our first responders. Getting out of that immediate group of seventy-five and above in phase two, uh, as of today, all other subgroups, so that's sixty-five and over. Uh, individuals of two plus comorbidities and then you get farther down into essential workers, uh, school personnel, uh, public works, employees, et cetera. There's no dates attached to those yet. So we will, um, continue to pivot and, and be nimble as we have been. Uh, and make, uh, clinics available based on vaccine and based on what the state says we can make them available. Um, we're trying to do our homework on the front end. Um, which, uh, we've always taken pride in here, but we've really, the value is worth its weight in gold during these times. Uh, and making sure we have good data on the front end. So, uh, we launched that vaccine interest list, uh. Uh, last meeting, basically two weeks ago. And as I said, more than a thousand people have availed themselves of it. We're going to continue to leverage that to get. Um, to quantify eligible populations in Easton. And as of today, uh, we, uh. Through my department, fire and health have completed surveys, uh, to, to quantify interest in, in, uh. Gauge the number of vaccines we will need to ask for, uh, for, uh, all school personnel as well as public works personnel. Uh, should the state be amenable to allowing us to run those clinics? So we have the data, we know what we need to do. We have personnel who have the skills to do it. We, uh, just need those vaccines. In the interim, uh, until folks hear from us, um. For Eastern residents who are phase one eligible or are in those first two groups of phase two. Uh, you can visit, um, at first it was just a phone number and an email, but we actually made a, basically a self, uh, pre-registration form for folks who are comfortable using that. Uh, that is the fastest way to get on the list. Go to coeaston MA dot US slash covid nineteen. There's three surveys. They're, they're, I think relatively, uh, self-explanatory, says, you know, over seventy-five. Sixty-five to seventy-four and then the comorbidity one. Fill one of those out, get yourself on the list. That automatically gets, uh, uploaded into our. Growing spreadsheet, uh, every day. Uh, if you are not able to use that website, of course, you can. Uh, email covid nineteen at easton MA dot US. And if you, uh, do not have a computer, you can call our covid hotline. Uh, for hu- help on the phone, which is five oh eight two three zero zero seven eight three. Uh, we do ask that folks keep in mind that this is a pre-registration interest list. It's not a guarantee that we'll be able to get a dose, but it helps us better understand. What we need to ask for. And if we get them, we will call you. Um, and we ask that people don't submit multiple, uh, registrations. It doesn't, uh, move you up in line, um. Uh, and if you do get a, a vaccine elsewhere, please email us and let us know. So that's, uh, that's it. I know that was a lot, but happy to take any questions, uh, maybe, uh, if something was not covered.
Craig, any questions?
No, I just want to thank Connor and John and, and the crew for doing this. And as I said earlier. Feedback that I got from people who, who went on Saturday were very positive. Um, and, um. Folks who have gone to, to Gillette are finding it very well-run as well. So I, I think I echo what Connor said. If you, if you're not hearing from us, you can get a time to go to Gillette or places like that. Go for it. Do it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, very well said, Connor. I mean, folks dotting the i's, crossing the t's. Uh, literally you are creating opportunities to keep our people safe. I, I don't think that this happens. Across the Commonwealth. I don't think people are as proactive, um, and, uh. You know, sometimes we do things that are new and they represent. Challenges or they might be fraught with risk and, and I just always trust the progressive and, and aggressive approach that you and the town take. And you pull it off time and time again. And so, uh, just incredibly appreciative. I, I just really want to impress on everybody that. This, this whole process is so fluid. Lot, there are, at times our, our guidance that is lacking or things change and you get more shots at the last minute or. You might get less too. I want to be fully transparent that that's how challenging the situation can be and. Literally Connor, you described it so well, so succinctly, so confidently and the actions backed it up that I, I just can't help but be impressed and appreciative. So. Thank you to all, everybody. You, you make the very difficult. Look normal and, and I, I won't say the easy word, but, but you, you make it look a lot easier than it really is. And I just give you guys a ton of credit for that.
Thanks, Tom. Chuck.
I agree with what my fellows have said and that, um. That it's been an unbelievably challenging year all around and, um. Connor, could you just, uh, go back one screen and show, show me again the, the Eastern, what is it? Covid hyphen nine. Nineteen, that website?
Yeah, sure.
I just wanted to make sure, please, if I could.
Yep, sure. But, yeah, so it's, it's easton MA dot US slash covid nineteen. We also have, um, a pop-up, but even if you just go to the, the town's base website, um. Which is what will come up if you Google it or, or something like that. Uh, there's a pop-up that says, click here for more information.
That's great. Thank you.
Well, the teamwork has been incredible, the planning. Every week we think. This is going to be the hardest week. Next week it's going to get a little easier and it doesn't, doesn't work like that. Um, I think that everybody's just going. Um, full throttle on every, everything that comes, comes through and, um. I'm just really grateful to work with such a team of professionals, um, that care so much about our community. So thanks so much and. Um, Deputy, uh, Acting Deputy Carol, it was really nice to see you tonight. Uh, we hope you'll come back again and, um. Thank you again for everything you and your team is doing.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Deputy.
All right, next, I'm going to do the, the minutes, um, dated October nineteenth, twenty twenty and January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll move, Barger.
Second, Broussard.
Barger and Broussard, motion to accept and.
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. Um, any select board notes? Well, I will say that I went to the farmer's market, uh, this Saturday and it was just incredible. It was like a Norman Rockwell. Kind of a scene with, uh, everybody was smiling, the vendors were happy, uh, the crowds were very, uh. Uh, very organized and people were social distancing. There were little kids playing in the snow. It was just, just really, really incredible. Beautiful sunny day. Um, so I would just, uh, like to thank everybody that's supporting. Those local vendors, our local businesses, especially the small businesses like that. It's really important and, uh. It was just wonderful to see, to see the turnout. Um, anybody else have anything? Connor, any other comments?
I have nothing.
All right, then, um, I would move that we go into executive session, um, pursuant to general law, chapter thirty-eight, subsection twenty-one A. Number three, um, to discuss the Eastern, the existing litigation regarding the Eastern Mobile Home Corporation LLC manufactured housing community. Town of Easton et al versus Eastern MHC LLC eighteen seventy-three CV zero zero two six two. Not to return to open session. Do I have a second?
Second.
So that's full, full Janetti, Barger and a roll call vote.
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. And, um, a motion to adjourn this meeting. A second?
Oh, second, I'm sorry. Barger.
So that's full Janetti, Barger and.
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Thanks for being here tonight, everyone, and stay safe.